Good morning, everyone. So glad to see you. Welcome. Glad to have you here. Elected officials, we've got Sheriff Gullidge and my missing buddy else here, panel. So at this time, I'd like to call the Paulding Board of Commissioners' work session for July 26, 2022, at 10 o'clock to order. And ask the marshal if you're going to bring the list forward. And you've got a mobile device on, like I think I do? Good time to turn it off. Thank you. And we are extremely delighted to have Pastor Alan Bethay, St. Paul AME Church, to bring us our invocation and our pledge. Stand if you're able.
Good morning. Let us bow heads. Almighty, eternal, everlasting God, we, a few of your believing children, have assembled ourselves here in order to give you thanks for this day. We thank you for the meeting of the minds. We thank you for your service that you have placed here. We thank you for the people that they serve. And we just ask you to lead them and guide them in the way that you will have them to go in order that they will make decisions that will benefit the community as a whole. Continue to lead and guide us and bless us in order that we will love one another and look out for one another and be helpful to one another. Help us to be the difference that will make this county the best county in the state of Georgia. We love you, glorify and magnify your name. We ask these blessings in the master's name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you so much, Pastor, for joining us today and starting our meeting off right. Minutes, item number one, is July 12, 2022 work session minutes. And the July 12, 2022 board meeting, regular meeting minutes, are available for review. Under announcements this morning, we'll start it off with Team Paulding segment. Paulding County's UGA Extension Office opened their new sensory garden, and we'd like to show that off.
So this is our brand-new children's sensory garden. It is the first publicly accessible children's garden in our county. So a sensory garden is designed to target early elementary ages. It engages the five senses: sight, sound, touch, taste, and smell. So it's designed to help them enhance those things that they learn early on. But a garden helps with so many other things at all age levels. It helps engage, you know, confidence and patience as you're waiting for those new plants to grow. So it was a class project. We had a record number of master gardeners trained in 2021. We had 11 go through the program. And in that first year, they were required to do 50 hours of community service and volunteer time. So we decided to come up with a class project to kind of help them cross that finish line and get those hours in. And we asked them to look around the community and see what we needed, and then design a space that could teach something and something that we can use throughout the year. And this is what they came up with.
It's been about a year since we actually started planning stages, and then we worked through the winter to, you know, for the completion. We have 11 of the master gardeners that went through training when we did that were, you know, the primary people in doing the work here. And it's been a great experience as far as coordinating volunteers and getting people to, you know, take a look at what their niche is. I'm glad that Kristin actually, you know, pointed us in a direction to have this sensory garden in order to use as an educational tool for the Extension Office and for local schools and anyone that just wants to come out and take a look at it.
We're located at 530 West Memorial Drive. And if you want to come out and use the garden, or if you have more questions about children's programming, you can contact us at 770-443-7616.
Good job, Jeff Harkins and the Public Information Team for putting that on. That's great. And I'd also like to recognize Mary Carol Sheffield, who's the director of that group. And will you raise your hand, Mary Carol? Yeah, would you come out and help me with my tomatoes?
We got curd like.
Next is the Board of Commissioners would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Daniel Perrin, the Lead Communications Officer at our Paulding 911 Center. And while the Director of the 911 Center, David Mumford, is coming forward, I'm going to read the appreciation award here. This award is presented to Daniel Perrin in recognition of outstanding service to his community, presented by the Paulding County Board of Commissioners on this 26th day of July 2022. As Baker Street says, this man is a keeper. Daniel?
Good morning. I apologize ahead of time for my forthcoming loss of voice as I go through this, but it's my honor today to present this award to Daniel. He's a Lead Communications Officer at the 911 Center, and he began his employment with us in January 2017. He was promoted to a Communications Training Officer in August of 2018, and then to a Lead Communications Officer in April of 2020. So he's moved up pretty steadily through the ranks. One interesting note about Daniel was that he was the first and actually only applicant that we ever had that we hired remotely. He and his wife were deployed overseas at the time, and they were moving back to the United States. And he found our job listing, and we kind of recognized the talent that he had. So we changed up our hiring process a little bit, and we allowed him to do most of his testing and even his interview remotely. And then we had a lot of the stuff done when he actually came back to the States and finished out his package. So it turned out to be a good deal for us and for Daniel. He's still here and done a really good job for us. He has excellent performance in all areas, and he's been instrumental in our peer support team. And that's those team members serve voluntarily, and they're chosen based on their demeanor and ability to maintain confidentiality. They respond to traumatic calls where our members of the 911 Center have experienced a traumatic call. Or in some of their cases, in Daniel's case, he's responded to other 911 Centers and other agencies throughout Georgia to assist with their traumatic call and help them resolve that, give them somebody to talk to and help them resolve those issues. He's also in the peer support world. Daniel's also published. He wrote an article about his role in moving into peer support, and he had that published in a national peer support magazine. So we're proud of that, recognize Daniel for what he did, and it shines a good light on the county that we have employees like that. In our staffing shortage time, which is pretty much universal across the 911 Centers and public safety in general, Daniel has consistently trained back-to-back employees, trying to help us catch up with staffing. And it's not an easy task to continue with training employees one after the other, maybe even a couple of times multiple employees sitting with him at the same time, or new hires. But he's done that. And he does it while he also serves as an assistant shift supervisor in addition to all of his other duties. The best recognition, I think, for almost any employee doesn't come from me. I mean, it comes from their peers or even another agency. And so in this case, I want to read something that we received, an email that we received from Hiram PD last week, and it's about Daniel from Lieutenant Carlson from Hiram Police Department. And he said, "I want to take a moment to give my praise to Mr. Daniel Perrin for his outstanding professionalism. Over the past few months, I have noticed a huge maturity within his scope of duties, and it's highly appreciated. Daniel is patient. He listens attentively, gathers as much information as well as transfers as much information as necessary, well-spoken, and goes above and beyond to get the officers whatever is needed to get the job accomplished. Daniel sets the precedent of unity within law enforcement, and his camaraderie is appreciated." I think that speaks volumes to someone's work ethic if you have other agencies who recognize it and they send a letter to us telling us how well you're doing. So Daniel's a dedicated and hard-working professional, and we're lucky to have him as an employee. And hopefully, he'll hang around for a while. If you would, join me in congratulating him.
His wife and kids are back there, too.
Well, I would like for his wife and kids to come forward for a picture. And also, among all those other accolades, he was Employee of the Month for Paulding County. Was it April or May? I can't remember. All right, squeeze it in here. Come on up here, handsome guys. Pretty girls. Next, we have two special invited guests, and I didn't meet them when I was wandering around before the meeting, but we've got Ms. Regan Hammond with Venasi. I don't know exactly how you--
VHB.
Okay. VHB, Venasi Hangan, Brussels Incorporated, and Mr. Dan Dobree with Croy Engineering. Is Dan here this morning?
He is not, sir.
Not able to be here?
No.
And we're going to get an update here on the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, which is extremely important to this board. And so we want to hear what the update is, and thank you for being here, Regan.
I think I pulled it there on one.
I'll see it there.
Oh, sorry. Before Regan started, I just wanted to present her to the board. And we want to thank you all for the opportunity to come and speak and to share this exciting study, this update, with you all. It's very important, as always, to have a plan, have a good plan, and have a plan that our citizens have put information towards and have given us good advice and given us thoughts and information to share to make this plan as successful as it can be for our community. So Regan and her team are going to be presenting this this morning, and we look forward to sharing this and any questions that may, you all may have.
Let's see. I got it. You got it? Eric, can you tuck that mic down a little bit, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Can everybody hear me okay? All right. Let me get this started here. There we go. Well, thank you for having me this morning. As the chairman said, my name's Regan Hammond with VHB. I'm our Transportation Systems Director here in Atlanta and serving as your project manager for the Comprehensive Transportation Plan Update. I've got a lot of slides here, so I'm going to go through them pretty quickly. But if you do have any questions, feel free to stop me at any time. So what would we like to cover today? This is serving as a briefing for the Board of Commissioners since we are closing in on completing this planning effort by the end of the year. So we wanted to come to you, share an overview of the project and the schedule, where we are in that. Talk about the stakeholder and public engagement that's been conducted so far and what's coming up. Hone in on the vision and goals for transportation in Paulding County that have been established through this planning process. Highlight some of the needs that we've identified, how we are developing recommendations, and then give you a preview of some of the preliminary and draft short-term recommendations that are bubbling up. And then we'll give you a preview of what's coming as we complete the plan. As I noted, I'm with VHB. Our teaming partners on this project are Croy Engineering and Blue Cypress Consulting. And I apologize, my fonts did not transfer correctly, so they look a little wonky here. So what's the purpose of this project? Well, Paulding County last updated its Comprehensive Transportation Plan over five years ago, more than that. And it's time to refresh, set a new set of priorities for transportation investment in Paulding County. And particularly with the upcoming SPOS referendum later this year, we wanted to provide you all with a great set of projects that you can take to the voters. The plan is being conducted in conjunction with the county's Comprehensive Plan Update, which is a state-mandated requirement. We've been working in tandem with that project. And really, that's about bringing together the transportation and the land use together in a way that works and supports each other so that ultimately, we're achieving the long-term vision for Paulding County's growth and development and transportation investment. So what is a Comprehensive Transportation Plan? Well, it's a wide, county-wide, long-range, we're looking out to the year 2050, transportation plan that encompasses all modes of transportation. So roadways, bicycle, pedestrian, transit, and we look at freight and goods movement as well. We're also looking at the state of good repair, the maintenance needs of the county when it comes to paving and bridges and drainage structures. And the plan will ultimately identify both short-term recommendations that you'll be implementing in the next, say, five or six years, as well as those long-term needs and some recommendations to address those needs. And it helps bring together the local priorities with regional transportation expectations. As we all know, roads don't stop at county lines. People work and travel all over the region, coming to and from Paulding County. So we definitely need to be cognizant of that. And the plan is generally updated every five years with funding through the Atlanta Regional Commission and supports the Comprehensive Plan. Now, why is putting together and updating a CTP important? Well, it provides that clear roadmap of your priorities. For example, your 2015 CTP provided you all with a great list of projects for the current SPOS program. And it also helps to stretch local funding to go further. By establishing your needs and your priorities, you can go to the Georgia Department of Transportation, the Atlanta Regional Commission, and grant programs, for example, to help draw down state and federal funding to make your local dollars go further. And then it also helps to support responsible growth. We know Paulding County is a great place to live. People have stayed in this community for years. They're coming to this community because they like what's offered here. And we want to make sure that the transportation plan supports that and supports what the future growth of Paulding County is. So where are we in the planning process? Well, we kicked off late last year, around November, and we're right here now in July of 22. We've completed work on understanding what are existing conditions, what's on the ground today from a transportation standpoint. We've also looked at what are the needs. So looking out into the future, where do we see deficiencies in the transportation system or opportunities? And then we are now in the process of developing recommendations to address those needs. We've conducted quite a bit of community and stakeholder engagement all along the way, which you can see with the icons on the slide here. But we are in the process of pulling together a full set of draft recommendations, both short-term and long-term, that we intend to take to the public sometime after Labor Day, most likely in September. And then, based on their feedback, we'll make some refinements and then be bringing the final plan before this commission by the end of the year for adoption. So public and stakeholder engagement really helps drive the planning process. You know, a plan done in a vacuum without the input of the community is not a plan that's going to be supported or be successful. So I want to give an overview of how we've engaged the community. We established some goals early on to focus on bringing awareness about the plan, so informing the community that this was underway and communicating with them regularly. We've established ways for the community to provide input into the planning process at multiple points. And we want to help build partners and champions so that once this plan's adopted, there are stakeholders in the community that will help you and Paulding County bring these projects to reality. You can see on the right-hand side some of the types of groups that we have engaged with specifically, including the general public. So as I mentioned, we've conducted engagement throughout the planning process. We've had an interactive website and some targeted communications. We've maintained an email communication list where folks can sign up at any time, and as we have updates, we share that information. We have conducted two of three community open house public meetings, one in February and the last one was in May. We have our third one coming up in September, as noted. We've also conducted a pop-up at a location in the community. We've done one of the two that's planned. We were out at Burnt Hickory Park one day when there was a lot of activity and ballgames and talked to the community to get their input, as well as to push our public survey that was open online for quite a while and got quite a bit of response, which I'll share with you. We've also been guided in the planning process with a stakeholder committee that was established to meet regularly throughout the process. And that group was made up of your regional planning partners, the cities, community organizations such as the Chamber, and many more. We've also coordinated with the Comprehensive Plan, which also had a multi-jurisdictional working group to make sure that we crossed both lines between transportation and land use. And we've conducted targeted stakeholder interviews with organizations like Georgia Department of Transportation and the cities to dive deep into their specific needs in Paulding County. Here's some photos from our two public meetings. Round one, as I noted, we had an open house and online comment period that lasted almost a month. We had about 44 folks show up at that first open house. It was a great meeting, a lot of engagement with our team, and a lot of input was given. We also got about 213 online participants as well. During round two, we conducted another open house and online input period. And in coordination with round two, we had an online survey that, as you can see, had almost 2,000 responses that helped us hone in on our needs and priorities for the plan. So one of the things we have established early on in the planning process is that clear vision and goals for transportation in Paulding County. And we revised what was developed in 2015. Here you can see the updated vision statement. In 2050, Paulding County will boast a safe, connected, and reliable multimodal transportation network that enables all to access opportunity, promotes economic development, and enhances the community's unique character and quality of life. So that's that aspirational vision. We also developed some more detailed goals for transportation in Paulding County, and I'm not going to read all of the words on the slide, but I want to hone in on what they focus on. Goal related to safety, another for efficient and reliable transportation systems, a multimodal network that's accessible, well-maintained, that supports economic development, and also supports balanced growth. During our community engagement, the top three goals identified by the community were safety, efficiency, and reliability, and well-maintained. So we've kept that top of mind as we've moved forward into developing our recommendations. A quick overview of where we started, which was getting that baseline of existing conditions. You can see that we looked at everything from our population and employment characteristics in Paulding County, land use, where the roads are and how they operate, travel patterns as well, what bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and programs are available in Paulding County, what transit services are available in Paulding, how goods movement is made through and within the county. And then we also took stock of what had been previously planned and was on the books in the county. We've conducted a detailed pavement and drainage structures assessment, updating what had been previously done by the county. From the pavement standpoint, we focused on roughly 560 miles of county-owned roadway, really focusing on those arterials and collector roads, the ones that receive the most traffic. Where we could fit in some additional local streets, we did. So to look at that pavement condition, and as you can see by the results, Paulding County's in great shape from a pavement condition. You have 34% in very good condition, 36 in good, and 21% in fair. That means you don't really need to do much of anything right now. There are a few roads that have poor and very poor conditions, and we're working with the county to develop priorities for which roads need to be paved. We also looked at drainage structures, so culverts like you see in the photo, again, focusing on county roads to understand what their condition was and help to prioritize which ones need to be upgraded as we move forward with projects in the nearby areas. So we took our existing conditions, we looked out into the future against our goals, and came together to identify the needs. And we bucketed the needs into these six categories. What are the needs from a roadway perspective? Safety. Active transportation, which is another way to talk about bicycle and pedestrian. Transit, goods movement, and land use. And I'll give you a few of those highlights. But before we do that, our community survey that I said we had about 2,000 responses to, you can see what they thought the top needs were: congestion relief and maintaining the roads and bridges. So from a congestion standpoint, we looked at congestion today as well as out into the future. So the map on the left is your future condition, the map on the right is today. We compared the two and looked at what those needs are and some of the key corridors that popped up: State Route 61, Dallas-Aquitheway, State Route 120 Connector, and the 278 corridor. There are quite a few projects planned on the State Route 92 corridor that are already kind of assumed to be moving forward. So that's why you don't see that corridor pop up for future needs. There's already projects in place to address those. And this is reinforced by what we heard from the public. Kind of backwards here, but at the bottom are the corridors that popped up the highest as needing improvements based on public input. We also looked at intersections. You can see some key intersections here identified that the community thought we needed to look at in more detail. We also looked at safety. And what we've done with Paulding County from a safety perspective is really kind of advance the practice of transportation planning here. Traditionally, you look at historical crash data, and you try to fix the problems that have occurred in the past. So we've looked at that. That's really important. But where we're kind of pushing into the future is that we've piggybacked off the work that we're doing with the Atlanta Regional Commission right now to develop a regional safety strategy, to integrate some of the predictive analysis that we've done in that work and apply it here in Paulding County, which no other county has had that done yet in the region. So we looked at where the risk in the future might be as well, and we pulled that together along with our historical data to identify where the safety needs are today and where they might be in the future. And you can see some of those highlighted here. Reinforced by the community engagement, you can see 92 Cedar Crest, State Route 61, all corridors that popped up with safety concerns by the public. From a bicycle and pedestrian standpoint, here are some of the high-level needs that were identified, you know, really focusing on sidewalk connectivity, closing those gaps in the downtown areas of Hyrum and Dallas, really leveraging that great asset that you have of the Silver Comet Trail to improve wayfinding and opportunities to connect to that trail, not only helps support an active community, but your economic development focused around that corridor as well. We want to make sure that we're linking pedestrian and bicycle investments to the unified development ordinance and making sure that safety around schools is a priority for pedestrians and bicyclists, where it makes sense for kids to walk and bike to school. for pedestrians and bicyclists, where it makes sense for kids to walk and bike to school. Here are some of the roadways that popped up in our survey of the community as needing pedestrian and bicycle improvements as well. And from a freight standpoint, we looked at where there are the high truck percentages. And you can see some of the kind of no-brainer State Route corridors in the county where you're seeing a lot of truck movement. But we're also seeing that out in the southwestern part of the county, quite a bit of truck traffic on some of these local roads that probably are not designed for trucks. So, we're diving deeper into that to make sure that we're looking at ways to improve those roadways to make truck travel safe and, and deter it where it's not desired as well. And from a transit standpoint, I know this is, can be a contentious issue, but Paulding County does have a park and ride lot for the express commuter buses that travel into Atlanta. We want to, the needs identified around that were to support that efficient movement of those express buses in the two-seventy-eight corridor and the access to those park and ride lots, but also to maintain Paulding Transit Service that is provided today, which provides much-needed medical and trips to jobs and employment and schools in Paulding County. It's a demand service, so you just call up and you make a reservation. But it's being used quite a bit for, for folks who don't have access to a car and need to get to these important appointments and, and employment opportunities. And you can see that reinforced by the public. And then from a land use perspective, I mentioned we've done this in coordination with the comprehensive plan, which has been updated. Here's a draft of that updated future development map that we've helped Paulding County work on. And we have identified some of those key places where transportation investment can support this future development vision. And you can see that, you know, the strategies that apply to the eastern half of Paulding County, where you have the most population and travel, may be different than how we address the western side of Paulding County, where the character is much more rural and desired to stay that way in the future. And then as well, focusing on crossroads communities as well, so that we can make sure that we're planning those retail and services in, at key crossroads of corridors in a way that makes sense and is sustainable. So, recommendations, that's where we are today. So, we are getting ready to run our project list, our universe of projects that we've developed by pulling from the sources that you see in the bullets on the left-hand side of the screen, through our evaluation. So, we've developed measures to see how effective proposed projects may be against our, our goals that were established. Ultimately, out of that, we'll have kind of some scoring related to projects. But that's only one piece of the puzzle in figuring out what we need to ultimately recommend. We also want to take into account other considerations. First and foremost, public input is going to be key when we go back out to the community in September, but also taking into account that there is something for everybody in Paulding County, looking at the geographic distribution of these projects and making sure that we're having something in each of your posts, so that you can go to your community and, and tell them, hey, we've got some improvements coming your way. As well as looking at the cost estimates and funding, all that's got to be factored in. We bring that evaluation and other considerations together into that prioritized draft project list. So, we advanced working on some short-term recommendations, knowing that you all will have a referendum in November for a new SPOSS program. So, I want to quickly walk you through some of those potential short-term projects that we've identified. Here you can see our projects related to adding capacity to the roadway system. So, that could mean widening a road or possibly constructing a new roadway connection that doesn't exist today. You can see here Cedar Crest Road Corridor, East Paulding Drive Ridge Road, Dallas-Aquitheway Highway as existing roads that may need some capacity improvements. We know that all these projects are not going to be able to be fully constructed within your SPOSS period, but we are helping to phase these plans for the engineering and right-of-way acquisition, and in some cases, construction in the short term. You also see potential new roadway connections here at the bottom of the list. And that's just a sampling of what we have. From operational upgrades, so that's looking at signal timing, maybe some improvement of the shoulders for safety reasons, basically anything you can do to the roadway that isn't adding more lanes, but can improve the operations of a corridor. We're looking at Win Road, some shoulder improvements there, as well as on Harmony Grove Church Road, State Route one-twenty, State Route six business, Nebo Road, and Buchanan Street, as well as ITS. That's intelligent transportation systems, where we have communications between the signals on a corridor, looking at Dallas-Aquitheway Highway and Cedar Crest Road, get those added to your network that communicates with your transportation communication center here in the county. From an intersection standpoint, we got a long list on here, and this just represents a portion of it. But as you can see, intersection improvements all across the county. Some may be some simple turn lanes or upgrading signals, others may be looking at roundabouts at, at these intersections. You know, the intersections are both focused on improving the operations of getting cars through that, but also the safety at those intersections where we see a lot of crashes or potential risk in the future. Bicycle and pedestrian, as you can see by the map and the bullets here, a lot of focus in the cities and connecting to the downtowns, connecting to the Silver Comet Trail, but also looking at some new opportunities as well for improvements up in the northeast part of the county, southeast, and some trailhead and crossing improvements as well. And then some studies we're recommending. The New Hope Area, looking at that complicated intersection and making some, you know, diving in deeper to make some really solid recommendations to improve that area. State Route one-twenty, looking at how we can improve that corridor. Poplar Springs Road, studying the possibilities for new roadway connections kind of across the Pumpkin Vine Creek area from State Route sixty-one east into eastern Paulding County. Let's just see if, if there's something that's feasible through there. I know we have a lot of terrain and environmental challenges, but it may help with that circulation and connectivity in that portion of the county. And those, that's just a snapshot of some of the studies we're recommending. So, last but not least, what do we have coming up? So, we're developing funding projections and conducting our project evaluation. That's all kicking off here in this week. We are pulling together more draft recommendations based on that evaluation. We'll have our final stakeholder engagement through the months of August and September and October, a final public meeting in September, and then coming back to you with our recommendations and hopefully adoption of this plan by your December board meeting. So, with that, I'll take any questions you might have. And I know I probably went over ten minutes.
Thank you, Regan. That was a very good brief. Helped me out a lot to see where we are. Do you have an online for people that are watching or in the room?
I sure do. I'll say it out loud for folks, but it's up here on the screen. Our project website is pauldingchartingcourse.com. That's kind of the theme of the plan, Charting the Course to Our Future, which builds off the comprehensive plan that you already have. So, please go there, check it out. As part of the engagement that we'll be doing in September, both in person, we'll have a online version as well for folks who might not be able to make it out to the meeting, so that they have the opportunity to review the materials and, and provide comment as well. So, and we would like to come back to you. I know at the beginning of this project, we kicked it off with some one-on-ones or two-on-twos discussions with each of you and what's happening in your post. We'd like to circle back when we have those draft recommendations, dive into those details with you, and get your feedback before we finalize everything, so.
Any questions? Good brief?
All right.
Thank you.
Excited to come back later this year. Thank y'all.
Item number two this morning is bid awards. Discuss action to award the design and construction of fiber optic extension of 2022 to the Lowbitter Park construction in the amount of five-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-eight dollars. Ms. Tabitha Pollard, our finance director, to report.
Good morning. On July the eighth, we received bids, and there were four participants. This project will extend fiber optic connection from the Copper Mine Sewer Plant to Taylor Farm Park, and that way we'll be able to provide Wi-Fi to the public at, at that park location. It's about thirty-six thousand feet of fiber to install between the two locations, and the low bid was five-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-eight dollars, which came from Parker Systems, and we've done work with them quite a bit. The, the high bid was one-million-nine-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and fifty cents. So, it's significantly, quite a, quite a variation there. But the, this is a question more for IT, but the technology that, that Parker's using allows them to come in at a little bit lower price. We have asked, I believe in the backup, we may encounter some rock. I don't think they, think they think the right-of-way is new enough that we won't encounter a lot, but we may have to use some amount of contingency for some rock. And so, right now, we're anticipating less than fifty thousand, and if it's more than that, then we'll bring it back to you.
Questions? Thank you, Tabitha, appreciate it. I have no one that's signed up this morning for, to speak on agenda items under consent agenda, consideration of the following items. Number three is to adopt a Solicitor General's job description for an administrative assistant and investigator. Item number four is to adopt a state court job classification for a court administrator, legal assistant, and court reporter. Item number five is to approve the request by the Paulding County Sheriff's Office to retire their surplus Deputy Brian Fitzgerald's service weapon Glock Model Twenty-One Serial Number SWF five-ninety-three, cost of four-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars. And item number six is to appoint Ms. Amy Shad to the Keep Paulding Beautiful Commission as a representative for post two with a three-year term. Would any of the commissioners like to move any of these items to regular business, new business? Hearing no request, we'll leave them where they are. Under old business, we have none this morning. Under new business, item number seven, our public hearings to receive comment concerning our FY 2023 proposed budget. Finance Director Ms. Pollard is here to, to begin the public hearing, and I will call the public hearing in session at this time.
Thank you. Favorite time of the year, right? It's much anticipated, that's for sure. We've, we've done a lot of work to get here. And what we want to do today is open the public hearing, make sure the public has had an opportunity to review. The budget was put out June first, and it's been available since that time. I'm going to go over some of the highlights. I'll try to be fast, but I want to be as thorough as I can as well. So, if you have any questions throughout, just ask them, please interrupt, so that we can make sure that the information gets out to the public. So, first, we want to talk about revenues. And another thing, too, there are some handouts in the back that look like this, if anybody didn't get one, or if we need to have some more. If you would like to follow along, the slides are not there, but the meat of the presentation is, is there. Revenues, so to be able to fund our expenditures, we have to have revenues. And initially, when you think about county revenues, you think about property taxes. But the, we've got some other revenues that are taking over some of our property taxes. So, our, as you'll see in our expenses in a few minutes, our budget is funded thirty-three percent by property taxes, but the other revenues are increasing with time. On this screen, I've got 2022's property taxes, and then our, they're all of the revenues. The highlighted ones are the ones that I'm going to make changes to. So, from the budget that was done on June first, I didn't want to make any changes and have several drafts out, so I wanted to do a public hearing on the initial budget. There will be a revision between now and August ninth. So, what this highlighted tells you basically where those revisions are going to be. The budget was posted with a property tax of four-point-two-five. The actual rollback rate's going to be four-point-two-two. So, I've got to make a little bit of an adjustment for that. It's going to decrease the revenue. That number's actually going to go to thirty-two-point-three million instead of thirty-three-point-two. So, it's a reduction of nine-hundred-thousand dollars. The other taxes, those will, those will remain basically the same. Some are up, some are down, but overall, they'll stay by the same. Licenses and permits stay the same. Charges for services. We have a couple of charges for services, such as fees within the court system, some commissions that will increase that number, and that will go to about seven-point-six million dollars. Fines and forfeitures, we have, you'll see in a minute, we, as we implement state court, there's going to be some additional funding from that, from that court system being in place. I've got a small amount there. Right now, I'm anticipating one, that nine-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand going to one-point-two million dollars. So, it's a three-hundred-thousand-dollar increase. Investment income, interest rates are going up. We've made a few changes to be able to make some better investments, and I'm anticipating that one being at least two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars going into the year. So, I'm going to increase it one-hundred-and-fifty. And miscellaneous, there's some rental income, as well as some recycling that, those rates are up. So, if, if they stay up, we'll be able to see increased revenue. I assume, I think that'll go to about six, six-hundred-thousand dollars. So, overall, your revenues are going to reduce by about one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand by the end of the, for this, going into this next budget. That's important when we talk about the expenditures, because there are a few changes that are going to take place there as well. Okay, so how are we funding the revenues? Because one of the things that you have a budget that's increasing, but you're rolling back your mileage rate, so how, how exactly are you doing that? We have seen a significant increase in other taxes. We've gone from forty-four-point-seven million to fifty-two-point-six million. So, I'm going to talk about the, the magnitude of a couple of those, and maybe a little bit of risk that we may be assuming as we look at those. So, the title of a lorm tax, that's the tax that you pay when you purchase a new vehicle. Those have consistently increased over time. We have, this year, we have collected eleven-point-six million dollars in title of a lorm tax. The budget going into this next year is twelve million, so there's still a little bit of growth there. The economy will play a part in that. So, you could see some, there's a little bit of risk associated with that projection. The next one is the sales tax revenue. So, again, the blue is current year, so you can see it significantly higher than previous years. We've seen a lot of growth. And in April of 2020, you can begin to see some growth. Those are primarily online sales. That's when it came into, the state began to tax for online sales. And then in April of 2021, Costco opened. So, those are, those are some significant things that have happened in Paulding that increase, that assisted in the increase in that, in that revenue line. Again, I've already assumed a lot of the growth in the past. What we've done is we have estimated that consistent with what we've seen, so I wouldn't estimate a lot of growth in there. estimate a lot of growth in there, but I'm assuming a little bit of growth. There could be a little risk in that, in that if something happens in the economy and that number declines, then what we would have to do initially is we would use fund balance to get to, to make up the difference, and then going into next year's budget, it would make it a little more challenging. You would either have to look at property tax, or you would have to look at some kind of reductions. The past few years, I will say, have been very, Pauling's prospered very well for the past few years. So these numbers have, while they've been increasing, we've been adding to fund balance. So we have a pretty healthy fund balance that will allow you to take on a little bit of that risk. Our expenses, so where do we spend the money? And this is just general fund. This is not all funds. We'll talk about those in just a second. But primarily, public safety is our largest expense, public works being right behind that. And then judicial and general government. That general government, that touches a lot. That's the Board of Commissioners, that's finance, that's HR, that's the departments that touch everybody, government buildings, IT. And then I added a little bit of, let's see, and then culture and recreation and judicial. So it gives you an idea of where, how we spend the money. Again, 33% is budget, of our budget is funded by property tax. That's been declining, so in 2020, we were funded 40%. In 2021, we were funded 35%, and then 20, I'm sorry, got my years messed up. 2023, we're 33, 2022, we were 35, and 2021, we were at 40% funded by property tax. So before we open it up to public, for public comments, if you can take a look at the handout, and today's not only for just the general fund, it covers quite a few other operational funds as well. So I'm going to go through those fairly quickly. The general fund, again, will have a millage rate of 4.22, so right off the bat, you need to change that 4.25 to 4.22. That's assuming a rollback for all of the reassessment value. The next column we have is fire. That was a voter-approved fire tax. It ranges from two to five mills. We started out at two. The fire department's been growing. We've added fire stations, added personnel, and we will, we, that millage rate was 3.1, and we are recommending to roll that millage rate back with the growth to 2.5. That still gives you a little bit of room for capital, should you find yourself in a position where we need that. That being said, next year, you could look at it. That 2.5 could go up, it could go down, depending on what we need. Then you have special revenue, 911. For the most part, over the past several years, our 911 has been funded 100% by 911 fees. That will remain the case, that is, there is an amount of fund balance that's budgeted here. If they were fun, if they were fully staffed, they would not be funded 100%. And so they would use a little bit of their fund balance, or you would have to contribute some of the fund balance to 911 to be able to provide that, because they're a little bit low on the low end of staffing. They have some positions to fill. They are, they're fully funded. Special court funds, those are fines that are mostly handled by constitutional officers. So basically, it's the revenue that comes in, it's the availability to go out. The enterprise solid waste, that's landfill enterprise fund, those are basically, decisions are made throughout the year with that, depending on the revenue that has been incurred. Your solid waste fund, we are putting money into that solid waste fund every year. It's been, as far as operations, it's been funding itself operationally for a few years, but we have some post-closure costs that we're putting money into the landfill for. SPOS, it is what, those are projects that are collected. Again, you see an increased revenue there. Those will go out to the projects that were being approved by the voters for the previous SPOS. The SPOS we're in goes through March of this, of 2023. Debt service, that millage rate goes from two mills to 1.6 mills. That will allow us to collect enough funding to provide the debt service for the county. And CIP, those are projects that are either federally funded, or they are, there's an additional amount in there this year. Those are projects that, they're large projects that we may or may not get to. They're just on the books, and so I have them accounted for in the CIP fund. And then the water and sewer, again, that's an enterprise fund. That will, basically, we monitor it on a month-to-month basis, and you're required to maintain a specific debt coverage ratio, so you collect enough money to pay all operating expenses along with the debt. So that kind of gives you the first three pages of all the different funds, and we'll be back on August ninth to actually adopt those millage rates. The fourth page will give you an idea of department by department. This, again, goes back to general fund and where the growth is. So the growth from 88 million to 99 million, and where exactly that takes place. So I'm going to go through a few of these and give you some of the highlights. Voter registration, for instance, has a reduction of $125,840. They have a lot of elections going on this year, but they don't have as many elections going on next year, so it will result in a decrease. Government facilities, they had more capital last year than they have in this upcoming year, so that there's a little bit of a reduction there. Again, your state court, it's added a good bit of cost to the judicial system. And DOT has an increase for, the majority of that's asphalt. We've brought several projects this year, and it's been increased cost in asphalt. And then if you go down to non-departmental, that increase is primarily for the 2.4 I mentioned in the, for the projects, as well as a million dollars in fuel, because who knows what's going to happen with that fuel, and our fuel cost is up significantly. And sometimes what citizens don't understand is we pay those same bills, so when we get, when their fuel bill's up, our fuel bill's up too. It takes, we have to make our vehicles run. And there is a COLA included in that non-departmental. There's a 4% COLA. It's enough in there to cover currently for a full year, and we will implement that in October, so we'll only need three quarters of the year this year and going into next year. Now, one of the things that has been done this year for budget is we've staggered a lot, so we borrowed on future growth a little bit for some of our personnel hires for this COLA, because we'll have three quarters of the year this year, we'll have a whole year next year. We have, some of our positions were staggered between October hire dates, January hire dates, March hire dates. We even pushed some of them out into the next year, and so we won't hire them in 2023 budget, but they will be first request in 2024 budgets. I didn't give you a list of those personnel. If you'd like for me to run through them, I can. I did give you a list of the capital expenditures that are, that are included. So that's a lot of information. I hope it's been clear enough. If you have any questions.
And at this time, since this is a public hearing, I'd like to invite any people in the room, any of the citizens that would like to come forward and say something about the budget. The lecturing will be yours.
There is a sign-in sheet.
Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close out the public hearing for the FY 2023 proposed budget, and thank Tabitha for trying to cover, you know, three hours and 10 minutes. We have another public hearing in item number eight, and this is concerning JAG grant to purchase public safety equipment. And Ms. Pollard and Colonel Hutton is still here? He's still here? Some of the equipment is specific to law enforcement requirements and needs, so thank you, Colonel Hutton, for being here.
You're not going to speak, Ms. Tabitha? We've been utilizing the JAG grant for a lot of years. This year, we've been awarded, if it passes through here, a little bit over $33,000, our contribution will be $500. So it's a pretty good return there. On the equipment that we're requesting this year, under tactical equipment, we're looking at a new breaching tool, which is utilized to breach doorways, whether it's residential or commercial. And with this new equipment, it's just to add to our toolbox. It gives us another option, and this will help expedite things. Potentially, it's going to be a little bit safer than some of our traditional methods that are mechanical and explosive in nature. So it'll be a good, good thing for us. The other item on there is a CellSense Ultra. It is a scanning device. We already have one that we utilize in the detention facility, but it's made to detect contraband, so that we can, right now, the one that we have, we're utilizing it on our inmate workforce. We do have a body scanner, but it's kind of cumbersome to bring them from one end of the facility to the other end to run them through the body scanner. So utilizing this, because it's portable, we're able to check them prior to them coming back into the facility when they've been out on details and things of that nature. They do have a tendency to pick up stuff, and if they have noticed, they may have folks drop stuff off to them. So it's been a very good tool for us because of its versatility and mobility. So we'll be able to use it for many different things within the sheriff's office. And then the third item is the stun shield, as it's referred to. This is a less lethal item, primarily used for cell extraction situations within the detention facility. Trying to think of the best way how to describe it. We already have two of these, but they are well past their years in service. We have multiple issues with them, so, you know, everything has its time. So this is really just to replace that. But as you all are aware, we wear tasers, electronic controlled weapons system. This is very similar to that, except it's in a shield form. And when you have somebody that's non-compliant in the jail, and they see this shield, and it's a little bit of a deterrent when you see arcing on the shield and stuff, so you can get compliance rather quickly in a lot of situations. In some situations, you can't. But ultimately, it plays into the safety of our staff and the safety of the inmates that we're housing. So it has been a very great tool for us. And like I said, the two that we have right now, they're past their years of service. Their batteries won't stay charged, and they don't operate like they're supposed to. So it's time to get rid of those and to replace them. So I'll take any questions that y'all may have.
Good, good brief, and this is also a part of a public hearing. If any citizens would like to come forward and comment on these items. Thank you, Colonel.
Thanks, sir.
Seeing no one coming up, I'll close the public hearing for the JAG grant, and we'll move on to item number nine. Discuss action to adopt Resolution 22-23, a resolution in order authorizing condemnation of attractive land for the State Route 101 and State Route 120 intersection improvement project comprised of .005 acres of fee simple right-of-way, .011 acres of permanent easement, and .088 acres of temporary driveway easement. The project parcel number is, number one tax parcel number, 198.3, .4, .009, .0, in the 19th District, Third Section of Pauling County, Pauling County, Georgia, of course, by the declaration of taking method pursuant to the provisions of OCGA 32-2-4. Mr. Jones and Mr. Phillips to present this taking and this condemnation, which, by the way, has been going on for four years. What do you have, George?
Good morning. I guess my thought was to let the county attorney lead off with it. I can add any information that we feel is beneficial if needed.
Board members, this is just, this is an ongoing traffic circle project. I'll defer to George on the details of the project itself, but we've reached a point where we've been in negotiations with the owner of this parcel, as well as the owners of the next two agenda items. Those negotiations have not been successful to date. So we've now reached the point where county government is authorized to take the property by condemnation in exchange for us paying fair market value to the owners of the property. Again, the purpose of this, it must be a public purpose, and this is for traffic circle construction. And just one housekeeping matter, I believe the site on there should be OCGA 32-3-4 at SEC, but none of y'all care about that, but just to clean that up. George, I'll defer to you on the project itself.
Yeah, exactly, Jason. It's a single-lane roundabout at the intersection of State Route 120, Buchanan Highway and State Route 101, Highway 101 North, Highway 101 South. The county's been working diligently for quite a while on this project. Again, it is on two state highways. However, it's a very important route, and we felt with board support that this was a good project to forward, go forward with, to help the citizens in that part of the county. Obviously, we have to negotiate for property to construct this roundabout. We could not fit it within the existing right-of-way that's out there. That is state right-of-way. In accordance with state policy, we have to negotiate, like I said, for fair market value for this property. We've got an appraisal for the property, followed that procedure. We've obviously talked with the property owners and their representative, had multiple discussions over the years, and at this point in time, we simply are, there's a difference in what we feel is the best offer that the county can provide and what they feel the property is worth. So at this point in time, we would like to go forward with this board approval, to go forward through the condemnation process. Obviously, we will still try to negotiate to get this solved before we, you know, have to go forward, but we feel this is a necessary step to keep this project on track.
And we also will be providing more detail in executive session, because this involves real estate acquisition and potential litigation.
And like Mr. Phillips said, there's three items that pertain to this declaration of taking method, and they all involve resolutions, and our county clerk, Meredith, Ms. Meredith, said that they're required to go on record by reading. So I'm going to read the first one, and then call on another couple of commissioners to read the other two.
Mr. Chairman, we do not have to actually read the resolutions themselves.
Okay.
Just the title of each item, which are set out on the agenda.
So we don't have to read anything?
No.
All right. All right, well, we'll move on then to item number 10, the agenda item, which says, discuss action to adopt Resolution 22-24, a resolution in order authorizing condemnation of attractive land for the State Route 101 and State Route 120 intersection improvement project comprised of .017 acres of fee simple right-of-way, .053 acres of permanent easement, and five three acres of permanent easement, and to be determined the square feet of the temporary driveway that will be placed there. Let me start that sentence over. The permanent easement, to be determined square feet of the temporary driveway easement being project panel number three, tax parcel number one nine eight dash three dash four dash zero one dash zero, in the nineteenth district, third section of Paulding County, of Paulding County, Georgia, of course, by the declaration of taking method pursuant to the provisions of Official Code of Georgia annotated 32-2-4. Mr. Jones, Mr. Phillips are available for any additional remarks.
I would like to add, Chairman, I'm sorry, we did not have that square footage in your agenda, but the temporary driveway easement square footage is six thousand four hundred and forty-one point three seven square feet.
Mr. Chairman, I'll add as well, these, these square footage amounts will be reviewed between now and the evening session to make sure that they are accurate.
Okay. And item number 11 is discuss action to adopt Resolution 22-25, a resolution and order authorizing condemnation of attractive land for the State Route 101 and State Route 120 intersection improvement project comprised of point zero four seven acres of permanent easement, point zero six eight acres of temporary easement, and point two one six acres of temporary driveway easement being project parcel number five, tax parcel number one nine eight dash three dash four dash zero zero eight dash zero, in the nineteenth district, third section of Paulding County, Georgia, by the declaration of taking pursuant to the provisions of Official Code of Georgia annotated 32-2-4. And Mr. Jones and Mr. Phillips can add any closing remarks. Are we good? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. Jason. Number 12, moving right along. Discuss action to approve the purchase of two new pumps in the amount of one hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixteen cents from Xylem Water Systems USA Incorporated to replace pumps at the Seven Hills Pump Station located in post four. Funding will be from the Water Capital Funds, and Ms. Lori Ashmore, the director, to report.
Thank you. The Seven Hills Pump Station is serving the residents along Seven Hills and in Naturewalk, and provides future service as other pump stations are being taken out of service. They will flow to this lift station. Two pumps are, we have pumps in the, in the Flight Shop right now, and we receive quotes for both repair and replacement of those pumps, of those approximately twenty-year-old pumps. And they are about eighty percent of the total of the cost of repair for, or the cost of replacement for, for a, sorry. About the cost of repair is about eighty percent, eighty to ninety percent of the cost of replacing that pump. We are, current pump is, requires a lot of service, and we're concerned about, about getting this pump replaced before something happens to that remaining pump in the hole. The pumps are severely impacted by age and operating condition. The price of, of each new pump is eighty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-eight cents. We are recommending a, an allowance for air shipping of these pumps to reduce the, to reduce the time for these pumps to get here, as we have done on some previous pumps. We're requesting fifteen thousand to get those shipped from where they're manufactured in Northern Europe. So, our recommendation is to approve the, the purchase of two pumps to replace the pumps at Seven Hills Pump Station. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to-
What'd you say the life of those pumps is?
These pumps are approaching twenty years. In a clean condition, they, they would last longer, but in the, in the raw, in a raw sewage pumping, they will typically last twenty, twenty, twenty-five, possibly.
Any other questions?
Laura, about purchasing the new pumps, can you, what's the manufacturer's warranty on our new pump?
The manufacturer's warranty on the new pumps is a hundred percent warranty for the first eighteen months, and it drops from, to fifty percent from nineteen to thirty-nine months, and twenty-five percent from forty to sixty. And we do have a local shop available, very responsive to us, and in fact, one of our previous technicians is currently working for, for Xylem in that shop.
Lori, where are these pumps coming from?
It's Sweden or Norway. Yeah, yeah.
Fifteen thousand dollars to ship.
The, and we, we gave a little, a little room on there. The last pumps we shipped were about six thousand dollars apiece.
Well, I guess it's not a pair of shoes or a dress.
No, I, I was joking the other day about, you know, I could fly over and pick them up, but I think the excess baggage fees would, would be a real killer on that.
So, I mean, it blows my mind, it seems like we bought some pumps in the past, a few years ago, maybe, that came from maybe the same place. There's nowhere in America that makes these pumps or pumps such as this.
No. They, the Xylem, our standard Xylem pumps are only manufactured in, these pumps are only manufactured in Europe.
And there's no, I mean, no American-made pumps comfortable to the Xylem pumps? I'm just asking.
No, no.
Okay, stay where you are, and we'll go to 13. Discuss action to award the State Route 92 North Water and Sanitary Sewer Relocation Contract for Construction Management and File Services to Atkins North America in an amount not to exceed four hundred and ninety-nine thousand and eighty-eight dollars. The project is in post one, and will be paid with the Water Capital Funds.
Okay. Earlier, earlier this summer, you awarded the construction portion of this project to Mid-South Builders. It was May 10th. And the, the water main replacement portion of the project was designed by Atkins North America. And just to, just to recall, we've got, this is twenty, sixteen, twelve, eight, and six-inch pipe all in, in the job. The majority of the, of the pipe is sixteen-inch Dr. Lion pipe that will be installed. We have, the construction project lasts approximately three and a half years, and while we will have more concentrated activity as we're replace, as we're replacing that line, the, it will span the entire three and a half years. We have, we have requested, we're requesting approval for construction management services from Atkins. They are prepared to, to jump, to jump in and have been supporting us as this project is, is moving into, into the construction phase. This, this contract represents about six point four nine percent of the total of the water main construction contract.
Any questions?
Laura, do you have any idea when that project would begin?
Within the next couple of months. I, I'm hesitant to say. I, I did hear a, a date of August recently for, for that. We're, we're kind of tied with the road construction, so we'll be, we, we are working with GDOT to be there in order not to impact their construction.
Thank you, Lori. That's the conclusion of regular business. Longer today than we usually go, and we got some fine citizens, folks, to speak on non-agenda items. We'll start with Mr. Tim Estes. He'll speak on the Dominion voting machines. Tim, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the board, and even the employees of the county for coming out and, and supporting. We've met with a lot of them. We've met with y'all. We've met with individually. We've met in groups of threes, and thank you for the, allowing us to speak. When I decided to get in charge, I'd get in charge, and I decided to get involved in the election process, I was green, didn't know anything, and I still don't know anything. But I have been to just about every precinct, whether it's in person or online. I've even been to Jekyll Island, and I've met all the candidates to see how they respond to the people, and even saw some of them get booed off the stage. But I will tell you this, we've got the best Board of Commissioners in the state of Georgia, because I've seen them all, with your participants and everything. Thank you, Sandy and Virginia, for all your participants in the GOP coming and sharing your stuff, and I've taken a lot of your advice even today, and I hope I don't go over, but thank you for, for your knowledge, your support, and everything that you actually do. I don't see too many candidates when we're at the office of GOP unless it's election time, then they show up, but y'all show up all the time. Thank you again. I am, wasn't at the last meeting, but I was, I heard you say that, that Tim Square, but I was online, out of on vacation, and I heard all your comments, your comments on voting. You're concerned about that, your closing statement on quoting 21-2300, the first paragraph. So, I understood, and I was there, and I will participate. I have been living in Paulding County for thirty-seven years. I've raised three kids here. They graduated. I've been very active in the community through fellowship with Christian athletes, through the jail, the juvenile minister in there, and I loved every minute of it. I'm a, I'm a disabled veteran, six years in the Army, where I served our country, and I am concerned that some of that might be in jeopardy with these voting machines. I've seen it all, or I'm looking at it all. I'm trying to understand the state law, where you quoted some of it, but it's, it's, it's actually Title 21 on elections, and there's a lot more than just a little bit of it. So, I encourage everybody to read the whole title to understand it. Tim might be, Tim two might be, or Tim one might be going over some of that also. The voting machines are illegal. You say, how do you know that, Tim? Amy Totenberg ruled that on October 2021, and we're still using those illegal voting machines. You tell me why. Tell me why we can't get rid of them. And my thinking is, is the elite has something to hide. They don't want to lose their power or their reelection security, because I've actually seen it happen on this last election. I've seen candidates that got zero voting, where they voted for theirself in their own, own precinct. I've seen one candidate that got more, had more volunteers than they had voters. I have actually seen politicians have a landslide slide in winning when they didn't put up any signs. They didn't go to all hundred and fifty-nine counties, being with the people, and they won like crazy. So, if machines aren't manipulated, how does that happen? Now, I know the, I, I read the Georgia Constitution. I've read the state, and the, the Georgia Constitution states in Section Two, Paragraph One, that the people have the power, and not the, not the Secretary of the State. So, the people are trying to say, help us. Thank you, Dave, for visiting with me and saying you're going to get this panel together, and you're going to go to the Secretary of State and the Governor and talk to them to get a resolution for that. Thank you for your help. Now, I will tell you this, I've gone to Secretary of State, and they say it's the Governor. I've gone to the Governor, and they say it's the Secretary. Why won't anybody take charge, go to bat for the people, and say, let's stop this? If we're wrong, prove it. That's all I can say. But as, as a citizen, I am tired of being bullied by saying you can't get rid of the machines, or we're going to fine you five thousand dollars a day. I've even been told that they'll take away the government money. Well, that's, China does that, and Soros does that, because they want to control you by their money. Is that five minutes?
Yes, sir.
All right, so I'm going to say, thank you, help us, thanks for going to bat for us, and I want to see it resolved. Tim Estes?
Tim, would you sign the signing sheet there?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Peggy, did I sign? Peggy, hey, Peggy said where your hearing is. That's the only thing I know. I gotta be it.
Rebecca says you don't even need to sign it.
Sign here?
No, sir, you don't have to sign that.
I don't have to sign.
Okay, and the better half of the Estes family?
That's right.
Ms. Peggy Estes, on the same topic.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board, for having me here today and giving me the opportunity to speak. Mr. Chairman, my name is Peggy Estes, and I live at 1040 McCready Drive, Dallas, Georgia, 30157. I've lived there for almost forty years. I'm a wife, a mother, a grandmother, a concerned citizen of this wonderful Paulding County. I have had the privilege to work in Paulding, serving in churches, education, and public services for most of those years. I'm speaking out because I believe there is plenty of evidence that you have seen, I've seen, people have seen, in Georgia, among our citizenship, as to how unreliable the voting machines have become. They are, these machines do not improve voting situations or experiences in Paulding. Instead, I believe because of the Dominion machines, that our voting has become compromised. Something happened. Something has happened. It is happening. And in good conscience, I'm not going to continue to put my head in the sand and accept what the politicians, the Dominionites, and other authorities are telling us. No more, there's nothing to see here. That's unacceptable. We, the people, matter, and transparency matters. What price is too much to ask to support and protect the people of Paulding County and their vote? Well, we have to begin somewhere, and I ask that you listen to the people, choose to do what is right, continue to seek and to search out. Search out the facts, as well as what are those solutions? Many have no confidence in the Dominion machines. I do not trust them, and I don't even know that my vote got counted. This is one, only one reason, but one very important reason, why I believe we should get rid of those machines, go to paper ballots or something, I don't know. But something has to be done. Some action has to be taken. We start here because we trust you. That's why we're here. And I know that we're all on the same page, and that many of us love and pray for one another. So, I just pass that on to you. Do I need to sign this piece of paper? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Estes. Third is Diane Frank.
Hi. Okay, I'm not quite as eloquent as the Estes is. Anyway, I'm new to Paulding County. I've only been here about two years, and I'm just wanted to come. I, I've talked to people in my community, and anybody I talk to, they do not trust the voting machines. I am just asking you, I know I've been told you are not the ones who make the decisions. I don't know who makes the decisions. I'm asking you to find these people, or who it is, go to them, and get rid of the machines. Because, no, I agree with you. I don't trust the machine. I don't trust the machine. When I put my ballot back in that thing, I think, gee, where does it disappear to? Into the ether? Anyway, all that's, I don't have anything more to say than that. Please find a way to get rid of the machines and let's go back. I guess paper ballots, I don't know what else would be. I know they can cheat on those too, I'm sure. But I just know that we, and we know technology and we know it can, how it can be manipulated. So that's, and I just thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Frank. We have another Diane, Ms. Diane Little.
Good morning. It's still morning, isn't it? My name is Diane Little. I live at 175 Goldfinch Path, Acworth, 1, 30101. And my husband and family have lived there, we've lived here in Paulding County since 20, 2000. Chairman Carmichael, thank you for allowing me to speak today on a subject that concerns me greatly, which is my lack of confidence in the Dominion voting machines. The bottom line for me is these machines can be connect, they're connected to the internet. They can be connected to the internet. Therefore, they can be hacked. Paper ballots cannot be hacked, I don't think. Therefore, I urge you to let us use paper ballots in the upcoming election. And now I want to speak to you from the perspective of my being a poll worker here in Paulding County since 2016 and some things that I've seen. First of all, I want to say that I have the utmost confidence in our Board of Elections. Everyone is just, I, I love everybody and I have loved working for the Board all these years since 2016. But since 2016, through the years, I've seen firsthand how confidence in the voting machines has eroded over the years with Paulding County voters. As you know, or you may know, or may remember or not, Paulding County was one of the trial run counties for using the Dominion machines for municipal elections in November of 2017. For early voting, I work as a machine hostess. I'm one of the Vanna white people that directs you to the machines, helps you find a machine. And then if you have questions about the machine, I can help answer those. So one, so the biggest complaints I heard in early voting, and then again on Election Day, the first time on that 2017, was the screens are too big. People can see how I vote. And since then, the Board of Elections has done well to make sure that all the machines are set up so that is, it is hard to see who you're voting for, even though they are huge screens. Then the other complaint is, I don't know where to put the card, which by the way is still a complaint we continue to hear and some of you may have trouble remembering from time to time where to put your card. After the general election of 2020 is when I started hearing complaints about the validity of the BMDs. During early voting for the senatorial runoffs, it seemed to be on the mind of the majority of voters and some of them voiced an opinion as they left the booths. In early voting for that senatorial election, as voters would come into that area to vote and as they would leave, they might make a comment out loud or under their breath, I hope my ballot counts, or I don't trust these machines. These were actually pretty common complaints for those three weeks. It was kind of disheartening to hear those complaints over and over. And we, as the ballot, as the machine hostesses, would just listen and sometimes I would have the chance to tell them that they could have confidence in the Paulding Board of Education's as they left our area to go scan their ballots. In early voting this year for the primaries, the distrust expressed was a major concern for many voters. Many were angry, many kind of laughed their complaints off, but all in all, it was a frustrating event for many of them. On primary election day in May, two of the poll workers who I've worked, who have worked for Paulding County as poll workers for more years than I have, so since before 2016, didn't work this time. And I asked my poll manager what happened while they weren't there and she said they told her, each individual told her, we will never vote on those machines again. And that is, that's just very upsetting to me. It's not like these are fringe voters. They know what they're doing. The amount of distrust is alarming. It scares the number of people who say they don't plan to vote again. I often have to tell friends, you have to go vote. This includes my husband. So you have to go vote. So I think it would go a long way to restore the trust of voters in Paulding County if we were to use paper ballots. So again, I urge you to consider going to paper ballots. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanna, I mean Diane. Appreciate you being here. And we have Ms. Donna Walker.
I would like to begin by talking about a real insurrection that happened in Athens, Tennessee back in 1946. When World War II ended and the GIs came back home, they were appalled at what they saw. They had just fought for freedom and liberty and found that their McMinn County home afforded them none of that. While they were off fighting the war, the men that remained had formed a web of corruption that was beyond the pale. People who wanted to vote were threatened, beaten and even killed and law enforcement did nothing because they were involved in it. Like the DOJ of today, the 1946 Department of Justice took little to no action and downplayed any evidence. I'm sure most of you are familiar with that event, so to make a long story short, the GIs took over the election, they took possession of the ballots and the bad guys were dealt with. Great ending, but not without bloodshed. That historical event in Athens, Tennessee, it really isn't that much different than what we have going on today. We just have different technology and the corruption of the machine tabulation is in all 50 states. No judges want to listen to the people or look at the documented proven evidence that these machines are corrupt and easily manipulated. There are videos of the corruption happening at the drop boxes, yet nothing happens. Our Georgia state law says that we have to be able to read the paper ballot that is produced. I can't read QR codes. Who can? I can see what the ballot printed out, all the names that I chose, but that's not what the scanner reads. When I put my ballot into the scanner, how do I know what's on that QR code? What's that QR code telling the machine? And what about the DeKalb School Board election where the person got zero votes, who was actually the winner? That was only found out during the hand recount. Then there's a vining situation where they did an audit there. They found the Dominion machines gave Raffensperger 13% more votes than the hand count revealed. Those are just two of the many situations that have come to light. It's been proven that these machines can be hacked, programmed and manipulated to produce, produce certain algorithms to achieve the desired results. And we have to stop this. Now the Athens GIs took matters into their own hands after exhausting every other option so that they could maintain the freedoms that they had fought for. And now we have to do the same. And I'm not saying it's time to go blow up the courthouse and the jails, but we've got to start somewhere and that's with y'all. We need to get rid of these machines so that the citizens of Paulding County can feel their vote counts. This is not a Democrat or Republican thing. Actually Kamala Harris and Elizabeth Warren had quite a bit to say about the machines back in 2016. They said they were corrupt and could be hacked and for once, they weren't wrong. Voting is a precious right afforded to us by the 15th Amendment and right now, we don't feel our vote means anything. I have zero faith in the Dominion system and I'd like to go back to paper ballots. I realize there will always be cheating, but at least with paper ballots, I think we stand a better chance that our vote will count. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Walker and all of you five that, that spoke. I don't have anyone else on the list. Are you going to speak, Tim?
I already spoke. Oh, you're not talking to me.
Okay, Tim, sorry about that. I guess I've got, we get several versions of this and I must not have the latest one.
You're just, you're just messing with me. I knew you were going to let me speak anyway, Dave. We're here because you suggested it. So not suggest that we fight against the machines, but suggest that we speak at public meetings after we met with you. Well, I'm Tim Sudrith. I'm kind of responsible for a lot of this that's happening against the machines. I know we have, this is live stream, so if anybody wants to get in touch with me, they can email me, tim sudrith@hotmail.com and join our movement. Come up here and speak or just sit in support like these people are doing. We've got people from a couple of different counties here today just to see what we're doing so they can do it in their own county. I don't have much to add. Those were inspiring messages today. So I know y'all don't want me to rehash that or talk about the law. What I do want to do is update you on what's going on across the state. We're now having the same thing, people, citizens going to speak to their county commissioners and spending time with our election supervisors like Tim Squared and I did with Deidra Holden yesterday and learning about the budget, since we talked about the budget and how much these machines are costing us compared to running a election on paper ballots. It's surprising how much, what kind of contract we got into and how much we have to pay them for all the supplies and everything. So y'all should look into that. Appling County will be speaking to their commissioners next month. Bibb has already done it and they spoke to their election board and they've got a three precinct recount coming up of the Secretary of State's race. Nobody believes the Secretary of State won 52%. Barrow County, Bibb County, Chatham County, Cherokee. Cherokee's got a full county recount coming up in August. They're going to vote on that, the election board will, August 1st. And then they'll be scheduled for August 8th through the 10th. And we've got, we've already signed up 150 citizens to join that recount. And people are driving up from Savannah all over the state to participate in that. And that's going to recount the whole county for the Governor and the Secretary of State's race. Cobb County, they'll be speaking there tonight. Columbia County, Crisp has already been doing it. DeKalb, Daltry, Fannin, Gwinnett, Hall, Floyd, Forsyth. Forsyth, I just sent some of y'all a link to the citizens that spoke there this or last week. Stirring messages. Franklin, Fulton, Gilmer, Jackson, Loudon, Smascoe, Wayne, Walton, Harrelson, Henry, Houston, Jasper, Lee, Lamar, Miller, Pickens, Pierce, Polk, Richmond, Spaulding, Terrell and Whitfield Counties are all joining, doing the same thing. And that's just in the past month that we've got this going on. We hope to expand it across all 159 counties. The Secretary of State reached out to Lamar County and said that they had a cure for the QR code, that they could do away with the QR code, that the ballot making device would still print ballot, but without the QR code on it. They turned them down because that's not the only place your vote gets stolen. It's in the source code in the server. So until we can see that source code and see what it says, there's no deal. The Secretary of State reached out to Cherokee County and said, how about being concerned about not just your county, but all 159 counties? So that's what we're going to do. We're spreading this to all 159 counties because we want him to know that we don't like the machines. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sudrith and the other five that spoke for using this as a place to share your voice and your thoughts. That is the conclusion of our meeting today. We have a tradition that we've started where any of the commissioners that would like to celebrate something or announce something coming up in the community, that, so I would open it to the commissioners if anybody would like to announce something. I'd like to thank Pastor Bethay, I don't know if I'm saying your name right, but, I mean, most of the pastors pray and then they leave. You've stayed with us through the duration. What do you think?
I enjoy being here and I'm very thoughtful of the concerns that the constituents have in order that our voting rights will be acknowledged and who we vote for will be who, how the vote is counted. And I'm very proud that the commissioners are seeking to do what's best for the community because that's the most important thing is to serve the people that voted you in to do the job they call you to do.
Very well said. And amen. Alright, school starts before we have our next meeting. The buses will be back on the road, so that'd be my comment for the day. So watch out for the, the return of kids to school and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hold on.
Mr. Chairman. I believe we have a need for executive session.
Oh, yeah.
Hold on.
Yes, Sandy, go ahead and, and I'll end this properly.
Thank you. Next Friday at 10 o'clock, Phase Two, Mulberry Rock Park, we will be having our groundbreaking. We have been waiting for this day for quite some time. Well, it's Friday and I would love for y'all to join us. Friday, 10 o'clock at Mulberry Rock Park. And I think if I'm not mistaken, Michael, it's in the back of the park?
That's correct.
In the back of the park.
Thank you, Sandy. Anyone else? Alright, we do have a requirement for executive session for pending and potential litigation and we will adjourn out of the executive session, so I want to make that announcement. We won't come back in here to adjourn, but I do need a motion to adjourn for that purpose. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn for executive session.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Kakers. There a second?
Second.
Second. By Commissioner Galloway. All those in favor, say aye.
For, for real estate and potential litigation.
Okay, did we get that?
We got it.
Alright. And we have a, a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourning to executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we stand adjourned.